We're live here. Good evening, everybody. We just came out of non-public. And we'll stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public that we just left until such time as the majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes.
I would move to approve the Selectman's non-public and public minutes dated October 2nd, 2018.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would also move to approve the Selectman's public meeting minutes dated October 10th, 2018.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Okay, in the scheduled business, A, new fire station, fire rescue station.
Do we want to do the people in attendance?
Chairman?
Oh, one minute, Jim. Why don't we jump down to B? That way, we can let these guys get out of here in a decent time. Okay, if you want to, if you want to stand up to the microphone?
Dale Edwards, Regional Executive Minister, American Baptist Churches, Vermont, New Hampshire. My office is in 93 South Main Street, West Lebanon, New Hampshire. Reside in Enfield, New Hampshire. I'm here to speak to the property, the abandoned church across the street. We basically were informed that we had a church that had closed and the pastor had basically abandoned the church, left it. There was no longer any congregation. We received some documentation that the last worship service was in December of '15. Because there were some questions about the deed, we did not receive a clear deed to the property until April 8th or 10th of this year. So, it's just been since April that the title has been cleared for us. I understand from your assessor that the deed has not yet been registered in Rockingham County yet at this point, correct?
That's correct.
So, we didn't legally own the building to this last April. Legal counsel was recommending that we not pay a tax bill on a piece of property we did not own. So, here we are at this point. We do own it of this April. The property is of some interest to the denomination, but we would rather look at it on how do we benefit the community? How do we benefit Newton Junction First Baptist Church that we have a long relationship with also? So, in light of the back tax bill for three years past taxes, the question is, would there be a creative way in moving forward with the community in lieu of that tax bill to potentially deed that building and property to the town with some sort of covenant that the Christian Ed building be used for the benefit of the community via First Baptist Church in Newton Junction in the way of maybe a community building, use of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, those sorts of things? The only other option that I have, I work for a 28-person Board of Trustees that covers two states. And our interest would be more to just liquidating the property, paying back taxes and just see what happens to it. So, I guess this is just an introduction and maybe the beginning of an exploratory conversation that if we could find a creative way to benefit both the community and the church and vice versa, we would be happy to release that property. Our current cost in the property is minimal. It's about $4,000 in legal fees getting it through probate. We haven't invested anything in it. When I go back to my own board, there's a possibility that that board would be amendable for releasing a property for the cost of our, our legal cost. So, this is just, it's not even a proposal. It's a question of putting it on the table and saying, do you feel this could be a path to explore, to look at, to go down? I tell people I'm not, I really never wanted to be in the real estate business.
Has, has it been recently, what's the word I'm looking for? Assessed? Has it been?
No, it hasn't. I don't know.
I have no idea.
Yeah. Because I, one thing I would echo what you just said is, I don't think we want to be in the real estate business either.
Okay.
We have, matter of fact, we own some real estate, which we don't use, and we're trying to figure out how to get rid of it. So, that's just my initial reaction to the proposal. I mean, that's not a yes or a no, but that's just my initial reaction. I've just kind of, part of any conversation like this, though, is value. And I think we don't have any idea what that value is at this point.
I mean, you have a single building with a main sanctuary and a small roving area, what have you, out back. And then you have a building that contains four classroom spaces. Both buildings do have full plumbing, so...
Well, that we know of.
I'm not certain whether or not the, the old school building would be actually salvageable. I haven't been in that in years. The church itself could be a community hall, could be property for a new library. Now, there's, we should probably find out what condition it's in before we discuss anything and find out an assessed value for it. You know, if it's something, it's a prime location and, as the old saying goes, they're not making any more land unless they're in Iceland. So, it's something we may want to consider as benefit to the town. It is prime real estate on, you want to wait.
Yeah, and I, I would tend to agree with you there that, like, like you said, you framed this as the beginning of a conversation, and that's probably exactly what it is. You know, nobody's making any decisions tonight, but, but I think I would agree with Jim that if, if P, if, if this has a certain amount of value and you guys are just looking to get your, your legal fees back for it, that most people in the town would probably be in favor of something like that, so.
I think we should have the Building Department take a look at it and have Andrea assess it and go from there.
Just so you know, it needs a new well and a new furnace.
Yeah, it, the well is gone, the furnace system went, there's some pipe damage. We have had one feeler about purchasing the property, but I did hear the word architectural salvage. I have had a few phone calls from people in the community that are concerned about its historic value and not wanting to lose historic building in town.
Supposedly, that is the oldest First Baptist congregation in the state of New Hampshire.
Really?
That's true.
However, if they have, if they have gone defunct, then they're no longer the oldest First Baptist congregation.
You know, the, in New Hampshire statute, when a church is abandoned or votes to dissolve it, it goes back to the founding denomination. And so, we inherited it as we've inherited a couple of different properties. In this case, what made it a little messier was there's some, were some deed issues we had. It took a long time to sort out on probate. Otherwise, if it was like Northwood, the church at the corner of 4 and 202 closed, that deed was clear. They signed it over to us where we were.
I mean, for a $4,000 investment, it might not be a bad idea, but we definitely need more information.
Okay. I've got Scott Griffin from Pastor at First Baptist in Newton Junction's with me, and he's got some ideas also.
Yeah, Scott Griffin, the pastor of the Newton Junction Baptist Church. So, I, we brought him in because we're, we're part of the, the same denomination that the First Baptist there was. Now, now, we wouldn't right now have any, any use for the sanctuary section just because it's, well, that, that's quite an investment of money to, to get that up and running again. But one thing that, that, you know, we thought might be a good beneficial use for the, that location, that space, would be to create some kind of a community center, some kind of place for, yeah, one thing that I've noticed is I, I have an office right in the corner on 18 West Main Street. And when school gets out, especially in the warmer months, I see all these kids walking around, you know, dribbling a basketball somewhere, coming out of the middle school, you know, I don't know, coming out of their house, wherever it might be. And something strikes me to say, where can these kids go? Where can our high schools, our middle schools, even our elementary age, you know, children go? And I know we have Boys and Girls Clubs and YMCA and Plasdowne and Havil and in other areas, and I'm sure that with transportation, modern day transportation, that, you know, an accessible location for them. But do we have something in our community, in our area, for these kids, for these, for these youth? Now, one thing that we've just recently done, which I'm very happy and proud to say, is we've just recently rechartered with the, with the scouts, with the Boy Scouts. And it strikes me to think that, well, there's this, this scouting group has grown, Paul Taylor told me that they've had a lot more interest. But there isn't one singular place where if all the scouts wanted to meet that they could go to. But then if you, you were to try to cast some kind of vision for this location, if we were to be able to make it some kind of a community effort, get outside involvement, outside investment, I think of places like the Austin 17 House, maybe the larger Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA's, Boy Scouts of America, any types of organizations like that. Can we make something that's functional as a community center and especially focusing on the youth of our community? I mean, hey, we, we all know about the great drug epidemic and the crises that is going on in Southern New Hampshire and all over our nation right now. We know that New Hampshire and Vermont is our area. Whenever you look at those heat maps, right? Where's the hottest locations for drug overdoses and alcohol abuse and everything? Well, that stuff starts when kids are young, right? They, they don't just grow up in a healthy, good environment where they have mentoring and they're being important to, and they have stuff and people motivating them to, to go to college or to get into a good career once they're out of high school. And then, you know, it, it starts then when they don't have something like that. Well, what if we could just, I'm saying, begin a conversation and ask the question, is it possible for us to be able to, to make something together, to work on something as a town, as a community? Get outside support and involvement, because I'm not saying that we can all just foot the financial bill ourselves. I understand the ways of the world and the economics of the world, but I do also know that bigger mountains have been scaled and bigger hurdles have been jumped over. But I, I think it's something that we as a town could desperately, desperately use. And, and it's a good location, you know? It's not enormous by any stretch of the imagination, but it's, it's large enough that it could support something pretty cool, so. Yeah, it was just a, some things that I was thinking of, and I would love to be able to sit down with anybody who would want to start. I, I don't know how, how all the works, I was a political science major in college, but we looked at federal level stuff mostly, so. I don't know how on the local level, if you set up a team or a committee of some sort to start discussing what to do. I would love to sit there and be involved in that if we wanted to have those types of discussions, though, so.
I think first, first thing we have to do, again, is have Andrea assess it and have the Building Department look at it and see if the structure's even safe.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's been abandoned, who knows who's been in there, what's happened.
Yep, absolutely.
I think that's step number one, and if we find out that the building is in good condition and fixable, and Andrea says it's worth, you know, whatever it's worth, and I think we can move to step two.
Yeah, yeah.
And step two would be getting the community buy-in.
Right.
For the town taking ownership for that purpose even.
Yeah, absolutely.
I tend to agree with what you're saying. Sounds like a good idea, but, and you hit upon it, is it's, it comes down to money.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, I'll say it, and apathy as well.
Yeah.
I think, and the apathy is related to the tax bill, you know, that people already pay, so. But yeah, absolutely, you're right, there's greater, greater problems that have been solved, so.
That's true.
But, so, I think that, like Bob said, if that's step two, I think we should get through step one and then...
There was a Warren article, if step one works out well.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Right, right. I fully understand if step one says that the building's going to collapse and kill you if you go in it, then we, we know where we stand, right?
No, no step two.
Right, so we understand. I'm just, my, my, my hope is that we would consider this for, you know, if, if it comes back with a positive assessment, that we can move towards step two and say, let's, let's see what we can do as a community together.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Just for clarity, so our next step is for me to be in touch with Andrea?
Yeah, well, Andrea and we, we'll have, see if we can have the Building Department take a look at it, make sure it's structurally sound.
Scott has a key.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Sorry you guys had to wait a...
No problem. You're, you're a lot nicer to deal with than when I have to go to Vermont, so thank you.
I won't tell you the score because I've been checking it on my phone.
He just went to talk to him for a minute.
You lost Jim. Want me to do this one?
All right, we're going to move to A, the new fire station rescue station.
So, the fire chief had a couple of things for us. He, he had to move on to other things tonight, but just to explain this to the public who's not baseball fans right now who are watching this, we have a couple of items that are must do's, time-sensitive. I think the board agrees with me where these things need to get done, but we do believe they are within the scope of the fire station bond so that we will, even though we have to write a check out of one account, we will be able to get those taken care of later. So, one is equipment to hook up a washer and dryer, and the public has probably heard about this before. This is not to clean uniforms as much as it's to clean turnout gear with might have carcinogens and stuff, so this is, I think the public will agree, this is very important. And what, I don't see this one in front of 1630?
Right.
So, I would move to approve the quote to, for the installation of the new fire station washer and dryer for $1,630.
Second.
Discussion, and that'll be coming out of the Fire Department budget?
For now, yeah.
For now, correct.
That's hooking it up, right?
Right, that's installing it. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one has to do with the mission-critical electronic stuff, so for them to get over there and start operating out of there, which we've said before in this meeting, it's been a soft opening, but they'll start to operate out of there soon. But to get all those wires moved and plugged in, we do need some IT support, I guess you'd say?
Talking about the phone?
The phone, the cameras, the...
Cableing for all that stuff.
Right.
I would move to expand, not to exceed $2,500 to correct the...
It's...
Sorry, $2,311 to correct the situation in the IT wires.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, just so you understand that this is the phone system only, okay, no security cameras. If you're looking at the quote that's out here, quote for fire station, is that what you're looking at, or is this something else that I don't know about?
This is First Access Technologies?
Yes, that is just the phone system to finish the installation and adding more phones and a new card.
All right, what's the one for...
For $2,500?
The doors and the cameras, et cetera?
I have no idea what that one is.
It's cabling that...
Okay, so that came in prior to me to...
Okay, so it's, we've got the wrong link then for that one?
Well, the chief said $2,500, so maybe...
He did say $2,500.
This is for the telephone, and actually, in listening to the fire chief this evening, that was part of the...
$2,500?
Well, no, but that is part of the problem that is over there is that they have simply dropped the wires down along the wall when they were supposed to be embedded and come up to the wall.
Just to fix the problem in that room.
But I, but I think Jim's motion is still one we can do.
Well, that, that takes care of this part.
Well, you said not to exceed $2,500.
Right, not to exceed $2,500.
Right, I think that was part of the other...
And that's what the chief was looking for.
Other stuff that the chief needed done.
Yeah.
Or otherwise.
I wish the chief was still here so that I had the, his, the paper he had in his seat.
Right.
Okay, so he, he gave you a different, he gave you a quote for something different than what I have here?
$2,500 to, to finish the cameras and telephones and the door.
Okay, all right. So, that's what you're doing on...
For wiring.
The wiring for the security cameras.
Right.
And the doors and...
The door, the cameras and the phones.
Security system.
Several things, yeah.
Okay, so then the quote that I have here online, that you have here, is for the phone system.
Yeah.
Okay, that's to finish off the phone system as well. So, you're probably looking, what, 40, 23 and 40 and $2,500 is...
Forty-eight, 11.
So, let's, why don't we do this?
Give you two motions here.
Yeah, two motions. Jim's got one on the table I seconded?
That's for this. I apologize, I misread them. I thought I had two of the same documents, so I read the chief's earlier and thought this was the same one.
Yeah, that's why I got confused.
This one does include proper embedding of the, the phone connections, probably embedding the wires in the walls.
The phone wires are already in the wall. They're already hooked into the jack.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just hooking up the phone systems.
Yeah.
Install, installation moving, you know, that's...
So, Jim, your motion is for the repairs, right?
Well, it was, it was, that number is what's on this document.
Right, that one says 2311, though. Your motion was for 2,500?
No, I, I thought I changed it to 2311.
He did change it to 2311.
Okay, and the only reason I bring that up is because this should be coming out of, this is not, we know that the phone system installation is not within scope of the bond, so this would have to come out of general government, which I think we determined in an earlier meeting that we had room for it. So, that's the only thing I would add to what we're talking about here.
Oh, general government, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, then there's a third one.
Then I would make a motion to expand up to 2,500 to per, to straighten out the IT problem in the electronics room, not to exceed 2,500, sorry.
Second.
Discussion? Is that also coming out of the Fire Department budget, or is that...
For right now.
For now, right.
Yeah, fire.
Right now, it's coming out of fire?
Yeah.
Right.
Coming out of where?
Fire. Any other discussion?
The chief indicated he had these things in his budget.
Right.
If need be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move to D.
I would move per RSA 3195B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from Robert Donovan Jr., I know him, in the amount of $249.35, with thanks.
Second.
Discussion?
That's an odd amount.
The reason that it's an odd amount is in October, I had my neck surgery, I was unavailable for the meetings and other things going on in the town, so I felt that the October payment for me should go back to the town. So, I figured if we sent it, gave it to the food pantry, it's helping out the townspeople.
Nice.
Nice, very nice.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to E.
So, this is just the election warrant that you have to sign for the town clerk?
Move to sign the election warrant.
Second.
Discussion?
I think that's, yeah, it's to call people into the election and tell them...
Yeah, and then the testing that we gave the notice.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The only thing I would add to that while we're on the subject is, November 6th is the date.
Yep.
I don't believe we have an official Selectman's meeting before then, right?
October 30th.
Well, that's, that's a, a...
It was going to be a budget, but it's turning into a full meeting.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Because I just bring it up, we can talk about it then, but we need coverage for Election Day, and I'm probably going to be available like after 10:00 in the morning type of thing.
I'm available, I'm planning on being there from start to end.
I'll have to find out my schedule.
So, we can finalize on the 30th, right?
About you, Larry, are you available?
I'm available, so I can cover till it gets there.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to F.
So, F is the town is working on, this is Arch 13 Blizzard, and the bookkeeping department in the town's worked with FEMA to try to recuperate 75% of $40,000. So, we had several meetings, and what FEMA's trying to do is create the small project certification, which that only means is they're going to bless the town that accepts this project. Instead of us turning in all the paperwork that we have to turn in, then we keep it in a separate place, and if we ever get audited within the five years, we just reduce the paperwork. So, it gives the town the money back a lot faster, and it cuts out a lot of meetings to get reimbursed.
And how much was that, Larry? Seventy thousand?
Forty. It'll be 75% about four, she's up to about 40 grand.
Okay.
We don't know if this project's going to apply under this, or if it's the next project that will, we can work on this. Because basically, this cuts the paperwork and the meetings out, and we get our refund faster.
And we just need a motion to sign the form, correct?
Yeah, I think just the chairman signs it, I believe, I didn't see the paperwork.
So, I move to authorize the chairman to sign the FEMA DR 4371 certification.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's jump down to announcements before we do the manifest.
Yeah, I'll do A, and then I'm going to put a C in there because I, because you asked. A, Treats for Troops, we're doing that again this year, so this is perfect if you have the extra Halloween candy. We're collecting it at Town Hall. So, we send it off to the troops, because if it's in my house, I'm going to eat it, so I got to get rid of it. So, do what I do and bring it here to the Town Hall. What are the dates on that? Is that going to go up until...
November 1st to this 15th?
15th of November.
Of November.
Yeah.
So, after Halloween until November 15th, you can bring it all in. Candidates Night is going to be October 24th, and we've invited the state legislature candidates, so the two state rep spots and the state senator spot. So, that'll be in this room, 7:00 PM, October 24th. It's a, it's a Wednesday, and I believe it's going to be on TV as well, right?
That's correct.
But it's much more fun to be in here. It's going, it changed to 7:00.
7:00.
Yeah.
The, the best place to be will be in here at 7:00. And if, if there's, I don't want to jinx anything, but if there's a World Series game or something, we might have to do it earlier, but we can cross that bridge. So, C, I wanted to add, I'm hoping the board will support this, I mentioned it before. We are planning, it's kind of an offshoot of the REC Commission, but it's not just REC, it's Diane, it's a few other people in town. We're putting together for November 11th a free breakfast for veterans to coincide with a Veterans Day ceremony. Still some moving parts, but we're going to send some invites out to people, and we should have a head count well before that. We would need to fund, you know, the, you know, the pancake mix and the sausage and the coffee and all that stuff. So, I can't give you guys today a quote because I, I don't have a head count, but I'm hoping once we get a head count for something like that, the board will support it. I can't imagine it's going to be more than a few hundred dollars. And so, I'm hoping the board will just give me like a nod of the head, yes, we'll support that, and I'll come back at a, a future meeting with the hard numbers, so.
Is that from Recreation Budget?
It would not be from Rec, because we're not, I mean, we probably could, but yeah.
Right, you're getting, getting...
But we didn't budget for it.
Where will it be?
That is yet to be announced. I'm working on something, but it would be here in town.
Okay.
And I'm hoping, what's that?
Patient two has a nice kitchen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking we might have too many people for that. Yeah, we might have more than that, so.
Could always see about the fishing game club. I believe they... I believe they still have a kitchen down there.
I don't want to say where it's going to be, because if they turn me down, I don't want to...
Well, just give an idea as a place.
Yeah, right, absolutely, yeah. So more to come on that and if all the selectmen are available, if you're good with a spatula, I need you to... So I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Other business, signed manifest, requisitions, abatement, tax credits, correspondence and appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to sign the manifest, vendor manifest dated 10/16/2018,
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we sign the payroll manifest for the pay period of 9/30/2018 to 10/13/2018 with a pay date of 10/18/2013.
2018?
2018, sorry.
Thank you.
Don't fall behind your dates there, Jim.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
It's an easy one.
Any other announcements? Any motions?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.